Thank you, Mr. Chair President. Excuse me. I'm calling the order to order Lancaster City Council Finance Committee meeting for September 23rd, 2024. The first item to discuss is Resolution 100-24, a resolution to approve a then and now certificate for payment of an invoice from American Structure Point out of the L.D.O.T. Improvement Fund 314, and this is coming from Public Works Councilman Keener.
Yes, I'll have Tim, if you'd like to come up and explain this. Oh, I'm sorry. Was it Jeff?
Jeff.
Jeff, you go, I'm sorry. I can usually find people. But Tim, you can just stay for the next one then.
I'll stay for the next one.
Jeff Baird, Assistant City Engineer, is with this resolution, or what happened was, we had a resolution to enter into a contract and encumber the money, which passed, but after that, we did not cut a P.O., and we proceeded with the work, and we've gotten the first invoice, and we realized that a P.O. had been cut. There's already been a resolution to hire the consultant and to encumber the money.
My second will be Mrs. Kreitz.
Thank you.
Is there any question?
Any other questions? Thank you. We're having a suspension.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, suspension.
Any objections to suspension? Thank you. Next item for the agenda is temporary resolution 101-24. A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for mowing and trimming the city cemetery. This is coming from Public Works also, and Councilman Keener, please.
Yes, this is just our usual mowing to go out for bid. I'll let, go ahead and let Tim explain.
Yeah, this is an annual piece we do every year. What we're trying to do this year, though, is get a couple months' jump on the bid process. This year, the drought's kind of put our mowers in a bind, and they're chomping at the bit to get a new contract for next year. So as soon as we can get this passed, we'll go out to bid hopefully in November and get contracts signed before the end of the year, and hopefully we'll have a good budget number then going into next year. If we need to do any cutting, we can do it in that line item. So if we can get this passed, we'll get this out to bid, and we'll go from there.
Okay, three readings, and Mr. Lockenberg will be my second.
Yep. Can we turn the P.A. up? Is that possible? We can't hear a thing.
Yeah, we're having a hard time hearing with the fan.
Is that mic turned on?
I don't know. Is the mic turned on?
Is it turned off?
I couldn't.
We'll just ask that people make sure that they're close to the mic this evening, because we do have a lot of fan noise because of air circulation going on. Thank you.
Next one is temporary resolution 102-24, a resolution to approve the City of Lancaster Cedar Hill Neighborhood Area Plan, coming from Code Enforcement and zoning. And two issues there. Councilman Ayers is not here, and they also had me for a second, I'm not on the committee. So who is here from that committee? Okay.
As am I. I'm on Code Enforcement.
You take it. Will you be this? Will you be the second, Mr. Lockenberg?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay. Good evening. I'll be doing a presentation on this shortly, but this is just our Cedar Hill plan, the revitalization of the Cedar Hill area, and it did go through Planning Commission in June.
And I may read? Three readings? All righty, any questions? Thank you. Next, excuse me, next we have temporary resolution 103-24, a resolution to authorize the Law Director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the City of Reynoldsburg for the prosecution of adult misdemeanor traffic and criminal offenses committed in the City of Reynoldsburg. We have total three resolutions coming up, 103, 104, 105, representing different areas of the county, and I assume Law Director would like to talk about it?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Wolfinger. I can address all three of them at once.
Save time.
Yep. So my office prosecutes all adult misdemeanor crimes that occur in Fairfield County, and I do that for the City of Lancaster by statute, but I also do it for the City of Reynoldsburg, the City of Pickerington, and all of the unincorporated areas in the county by contract. We have three different prosecution contracts, one with Pickerington, one with Reynoldsburg, and then the county commissioners pay for everything that happens in the unincorporated areas, including the townships and villages. So for Pickerington and Reynoldsburg, we typically go on an annual basis, because their contracts can vary in terms of how many cases they have that my office has to handle in any given year. The county tends to be a little bit more predictable, so we go on a two-year cycle with the county, and currently, all three are up for a new contract term. Typically, what we try to do is to ask those organizations to bear a similar responsibility for the costs of their cases that we're prosecuting. Ultimately, the City of Lancaster subsidizes my office, because all of that money goes into the general fund. All of the proceeds of these contracts go straight to the general fund. Nothing comes to my office specifically, but obviously, you fund me out of the general fund. So we just appreciate you passing these, so that I can start negotiating those contracts and getting those in place for '20, '25. Sorry.
Excuse me, thank you, and we got three readings on each of those. And any questions from anybody on this side? Excuse me. All righty. The final one is temporary resolution 106-24, a resolution to schedule Lancaster City Council meetings and Finance Committee meetings for 2025, coming from the Law Committee. Councilman Kreitz.
Yes, thank you. This just sets those council meeting dates for next year, because the clerk has to get the room scheduled and reserved.
And I will be the second, it looks like?
Yes, in three readings.
Three readings? Thank you. Any questions from council? Do you like the dates? Is everybody happy with them? Good. That concludes the resolutions, and there's no ordinances for tonight, new ordinances for discussion. Under other discussion items, departmental updates.
I just wanted to make a quick statement. I know you guys are voting on the third reading of the gas prepay deal, so I just prepared a quick little something. Since 2008, the prepay transaction has been a vital source of economic development funding for our city. Currently, we are knee-deep in this transaction. We've ramped up our collaboration with Bond Council, many attorneys. We're collaborating weekly, we're now, we're now working really twice weekly at least as we approach the bond sale date. Our lawyers and advisors are working hard, updating the necessary documents and assessing the market to ensure everything's in place. So with tonight's vote, we significantly enhance the likelihood of a successful deal. This timing is crucial, as financial spreads and rates fluctuate rapidly sometimes by the minute. It's not even that, it is as dramatic as that sounds. So by getting a long period of time to capture the best possible trigger time, we position ourselves to optimize our financial outcomes. We anticipate that the renewal process will be finalized in the coming weeks. I thank you for your support of economic development funding through this important program. Your vote tonight makes a meaningful impact on our community's growth and prosperity.
Any questions? I think we got the message.
All right, good. Thank you.
Any other department, departmental updates? Hearing none, I will move to President Porter for tonight's meeting prep.
Yes, this evening, we have a special presentation from our city planner, Chaslin Carter, and Holly Mattie regarding this Cedar Hill Neighborhood Plan. You heard that alluded to a little bit ago. We are going outside of the order of regular business in order to get our voting pattern in, which is more abbreviated than we normally have, but it is very important, as previously mentioned, that we get the prepaid gas deal approved this evening in an orderly fashion, so that we can get that out for purposes of dealing with the interest rates and the changes that are going on. So those are the two main things, and we will also be dealing with our regular agenda and going through all of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, President Porter. Any other items for the Finance Committee, if anybody? I hear none, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I need to do a roll call. Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers is not here. Mr. Schoenover?
Yes.
And I vote yes. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Chairman Wolfinger.
At 6:12.
Thank you. The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council has to convene at 6:30, which was the public, published time. We will do that between now and 6:30. If folks need a restroom break or anything else, we'll be on recess until 6:30. So the restrooms are out in the hallway, if you haven't already seen them. Thank you.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematorium in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Hi, this is Chuck Sims with the Lancaster DARE program. DARE provides students with skills to resist the pressure of drugs, gangs, and violence, and emphasizes self-esteem, good decision-making, and communication skills. This month, when you buy a car, truck, or SUV from Buckeye Toyota or Buckeye Honda, the Buckeye Cares program will make a generous donation to DARE with every vehicle they sell. Thanks, Buckeye, for your continued support in helping keep our kids safe.
Good evening. At this time, we would ask that you rise if you are able. And gentlemen, please remove your hats. We have a prayer before the meeting and we roll into the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and finally, for the wisdom to know the difference.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I would ask now that the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Price?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Luttenberg?
Here.
Mr. Skouhaver?
Here.
Ms. Teeter?
Here.
Mr. Weeding?
Here.
Mr. Holtenbro.
Present.
Let the record reflect that nine members of Lancaster City Council are present. At this time, I would accept a motion to excuse Councilman Ayers.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Ayers. All those, please signify by saying aye of their approval.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We will now have the reading and disposal of the Journal.
Regular meeting minutes dated September 9, 2024.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the Journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the Journal. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll now move on to the reports of city officials.
Email dated September 10, 2024 regarding Finance Committee Minutes submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Email dated September 13, 2024 regarding an email response of the Chief of our Drag Show Code Violation submitted by Law Director Hall. Email dated September 16, 2024 regarding Yard Waste Disposal submitted by Superintendent Shaw Fowler. Series of emails dated October 18, featuring Council Clerk, Council President Porter, Angela Prior trial, and Mayor's Administrator Assistant, Mrs. Shishows regarding rescheduling council training. Series of emails dated September 19, 2024 between Council President and Reporter, council members, and Law Director Hall regarding proposed 2025 schedule, council schedule. Email dated September 19, 2024 regarding violation of our show proposal to amend the judge submitted by Law Director Hall. Email dated September 20, 2024 regarding Finance Committee Agenda submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Series of emails dated September 23, 2024 between Police Chief Snyder, Service Safety Director Woody, council member, and council member regarding cooperation with Attorney Eddie dated September 23, or 23, 2024. Series of emails dated September 23, 2024 between city council members and city administration regarding these.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, please approve by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll next move on to communications.
Email dated September 6, 2024.
Excuse me. Thank you for providing us that feedback, but we would ask that people don't speak out in the meeting. If you can't hear somebody, please come up and speak to the law director or somebody over here on the end and they will let us know. We just need to keep the business moving, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Email dated September 6, 2024 regarding records request on submitted paperwork on the drag show event held downtown submitted by Dan Tucilio. Email dated September 10, 2024 regarding rezoning of type two annexation submitted by David Hodge with Underhill &amp; Hodge LLC. Series of emails between Law Director Hall, council members, and Keith Mauger regarding drag show code violations. Series of emails dated September 16, 2024 between Robert Nysley, Police Chief Snyder, Law Director Hall, and council members regarding Pride event that was held on 9/14/2024. Email dated September 18 regarding, or 2024 regarding Lancaster Pride 9/14/2024 event submitted by Natalie Knowles. Series of emails dated September 19, 2024 between Law Director Hall, Assistant Law Director Harden, and Jennifer Mock regarding fundraising opportunities initiated by Jennifer Mock. Email dated September 20, 2024 regarding ED 41124 submitted by Stephanie Bosco with Lancaster Economic Developer. Email dated September 22, 2024 regarding a letter submitted to the members of the council on the light the night Pride event submitted by Sarah Comer. Email dated September 22, 2024 regarding personal experiences of receiving support submitted by Melissa McLaren.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Once again, I would remind council members to make sure your mics are receiving feedback from the audience that they're having a hard time hearing tonight's proceedings. Please move your mics close to you. Please speak into those mics when you're addressing a particular issue. I appreciate everybody's cooperation. At this time, we will move to spruce special presentations. In this evening, we have a special presentation from our city planner Chaslin Carter and Holly Matty regarding the Cedar Hill Area Neighborhood Plan. If they would come forward and do the presentation for us. Ms. Carter, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, President Porter, city council members, committee and guests. I'm super excited that everyone came out to hear about the Cedar Hill plan tonight. For anyone that has not had a chance to see the plan and would like to look at the proposed plan, we have QR codes over here on this table in the yellow papers that you can download on your smartphones. So thank you for letting us present the finalized version of the Cedar Hill Neighborhood Area Plan for your approval. For those who do not know me, my name is Chaslin Carter, and I took over the city planner position at the end of April. A brief recap on how this plan came to fruition. My predecessor, Felicia Campbell and Holly Matty, owner of Crossroads Community Planning, started this project with the goal to revitalize the State Route 188 and US 22 Quarter coming into the city of Lancaster. To help advise and participate in this plan, a steering committee was formed with the following individuals. The purpose of this plan is to engage residents, property owners, and businesses within the target area to create a shared vision which would then guide future development, inform policy and zoning decisions, and identify possible opportunities for private development. It does not regulate development activity, change zoning of properties, or guarantee funding implementation of any recommendations. As we all know, a plan is a tool that helps guide the decision-making within a community. We hope that this plan will help the city of Lancaster revitalize an area of the city and bridged in history for which our town is best known, glassmaking. Let's get started with a brief description of the study area. The area of focus was on portions of State Route 188 or Cedar Hill Road in US 22. These two main roads intersect in the study area and serve as major entries into the city of Lancaster. If you look to figure, if you look to the figure on the presentation, you will see the study area extends just east past North Ohio Avenue, south of West Mulberry Street, west of the Hawking River to Hunter's Run, and north of Lincoln Avenue and Martins Park. A significant portion of the study area lies within the floodplain for the Hawking and Hunter Runs River. The floodplain incorporates most of the commercial areas along US 22 and State Route 188, which will impact the values of the properties in this area. The average age of the buildings and homes in the focused area date mostly from pre-1950. Only 8% of the homes were built after 1980. Most of the pre-war housing is about 1,500 to 2,000 square feet. The study area is made up of single-family homes with 15% of the housing options featuring multifamily 2-4 unit buildings. The commercial and industrial corridors, while functional and in fair condition, have aesthetic challenges. The primary businesses in this area consist of independent and small businesses such as auto-oriented services, thrift shops, and various other personal services. US 22 is more commercial with larger operations such as national gas station chains and smaller independent commercial retailers. And now I will hand it over to the amazing Holly Matty to dive into plan content. Holly?
Thank you so much. As Chaslin said, my name is Holly Matty. I'm with Crossroads Community Planning, and our firm assisted the city with this plan. And I'm going to take over and talk about the plan content, the goals, and recommendations. So this plan, as Chaslin mentioned, has a number of different physical conditions that we have outlined in the plan. We also talked about the demographics of the community. And then we also went out and did behavior mapping and data counts. This included staff from the city of Lancaster, staff from Crossroads, as well as some volunteers going out and doing visual data counts of different movements and activities within the neighborhood itself. And we also utilized data from LDOT, ODOT, and other entities regarding traffic movements. In addition, we did a community survey for the neighborhood. This survey had postcards that were mailed to every household within the neighborhood. It was also made available online and pushed through social media. It was not a survey that was strictly limited to those that lived in the neighborhood, but what we did was we, the first question asked about the characteristics of the person. Do they live in the neighborhood? Do they work in the neighborhood? Do they live and work in the neighborhood? Or were they totally somebody that just passes through the neighborhood? Because we know that we have a lot of individuals that utilize that as a corridor from US 33 into Lancaster. So from that, we were able to divide the survey results between those who live there and work there and those who just pass through, and able to analyze the differences in the perceptions of those two categories, which was very interesting in the viewpoints of those two different entities. From there, we were able to create a guiding vision. We were able to utilize the key words and the open-ended comments of the survey to hone in on what was most important to the residents within the community as well as those traveling through. And we were able to create that vision, and then from there, goals and recommendations. So if you could switch to the slide. This is our vision statement. Again, this was created from the key words throughout the survey. We also talked with the steering committee in making sure that we understood what the steering committee's thoughts were on this. So certain words like "multimodal," those words kind of raised to the top from the steering committee as it helps set up for different types of grants moving forward for the area.
Don't keep us in suspense. Let's get to some of the recommendations.
Yes. And so from here, we had 10 goals that had a series of recommendations with all 10 goals. So with this, the most important of these were talking about sidewalks and gaps, filling the sidewalk gaps, and adding pedestrian crossings. With this recommendation, if you see up in the top right-hand corner, we have the parking lot that is near Martins Park and then also has access onto 188. The recommendation coming out of this goal was to improve that parking lot into a trailhead so that individuals could utilize that lot. It could have an area for resting for bicyclists. And then also it could be used for overflow parking for the park as well. It talks about realigning the drive into that parkway to align with Pierce Avenue. Goal number two, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on. It had to do with food trucks. We got some mixed results. That through the community engagement process. So all we do is recommend in this plan to further study that to understand the active corridor through there. Goal number three is to maintain affordability that residents in the study area currently appreciate, making sure that as we look at redeveloping properties, that we are not raising the property values to a point where it's moving residents out. And then also sustaining and amplifying a resident's sense of pride in their community, and then also providing housing options through the, with the housing supply. And we also talk about how a site that could specifically be redeveloped into workforce housing. And then, two slides left. This one talks about the last of the goals. Talking about collaborating and communicating with commercial property owners. Talking about redevelopment along that commercial corridor in 188. Maintaining the character of the residential neighborhood while we focus on redeveloping that commercial corridor as well as managing traffic with that multimodal approach, and maintaining green space through community gardens and other recommendations such as that. And then finally, communicating the vision and the goals to the residents and the business owners to help them understand different programs that are available to help them implement the recommendations. And then last but not least, just talking about our historical connections. There is, the Gayfad Glass Museum was started by a woman. There is, the Gayfad Glass Museum was started by a woman in the 1950s. It was a very difficult time for women at that time. She started her own business with historical glassmaking. This is actually in the neighborhood, and there's recommendations about broadening those historical connections to promote small businesses in this glass city of Lancaster. So, with that.
Thank you, Ms. Mattie. Thank you, Ms. Carter. Do we have any questions from council members regarding the Cedar Hill Area Neighborhood Plan? Hearing none. We thank you. We note that the legislation is on tonight for first reading. If there are questions, we may have somebody come back during the course of getting through that legislation.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Do we have any petitions and memorials this evening?
There are no petitions or memorials this evening.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go outside the regular order of business to move to the voting pattern.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second to go outside the regular order of business. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. At this time, we're going to move to reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of resolutions with temporary Resolution 9624.
A resolution to amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations, increase receipts, and appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Police and Fire Levy Fund 2047, submitted from the Safety Committee, Mr. Bizjack and Ms. Teener.
Ms. Councilmember Bizjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily Number 96-24.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 9624. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just encumbering $75,000 for overtime pay for our police officers from summer events.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. A, or, sorry, Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Ms. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop? Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 9624 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 9824.
A resolution to authorize the Services Safety Director to enter into a contract for construction of the South Water Plant Concentrate Booster Pumps Project. Water Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Number 9824.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 9824. Discussion, Councilmember Wing.
Yes, thank you. This is for the additional booster pumps at the South Water Plant to handle concentrate line discharges.
Okay. Lean in. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Thank you. Temporary Resolution 9824 passes nine to zero. No second readings, everybody! All right. We'll now move on to first readings of resolutions with Temporary Resolution 124.
A resolution to approve a then-announced certificate for payment of an invoice from American Structure Point out of the LDOT Improvement Fund 3014, from the Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Ms. Kreitz.
Councilmember Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 100-24.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 124. Councilmember Teener, any discussion?
No. Thank you.
Hearing none. On further discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 124 passes nine to zero. Councilmember Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 124.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 124. Any discussion, Councilmember?
No, I think Jeff was here earlier, and nobody had any questions, and I think we're good.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 124 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 124. Yeah, excuse me, 10124.
Sorry. A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for mowing and trimming the city cemeteries. Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener, Mr. Luchtenberg.
Councilmember Teener.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 10124. Temporary Resolution 10224.
A resolution to approve the city of Lancaster Cedar Hill Neighborhood Area Plan with Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Mr. Ailers and Mr. Luchtenberg.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
This will be the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 10224. Temporary Resolution 10324.
A resolution to authorize the Law Director to negotiate and enter into contract with the city of Reynoldsburg for the prosecution of adult misdemeanor traffic and criminal offenses committed in the city of Reynoldsburg with, this is with the Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger or Mr. Ailers?
Councilmember Wolfinger, might we take, and Law Director, might we take all three of those right now for their first readings? Is that up? If we do that?
She only read one, and she has to actually read all three.
Can we read all three and deal with them at that? Or do we?
If, yes, if she specifies the number and the preamble for each, you can read them all at once in the vote.
So, Clerk Scott, would you read all three dealing with the legal contracts?
Okay. Starting with 104-24?
Yes, we've read 10324.
Resolution temporary 104-24. A resolution to authorize the Law Director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the city of Pickerington for the prosecution of adult misdemeanor traffic and criminal offenses committed in the city of Pickerington within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment.
Now, Temporary Resolution 10524.
Resolution temporary 10524. Resolution to authorize the Law Director to negotiate and enter into a contract with the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners for the prosecution of adult misdemeanor traffic and criminal offenses committed in the villages and unincorporated areas within Fairfield County, Ohio, and to accept payment. Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger or Mr. Ailers?
Councilmember Wolfinger.
It'll be first of three readings and all three resolutions.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolfinger. First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 10324, 10424, and 10524. Temporary Resolution 10624.
A resolution to schedule the Lancaster City Council meetings and Finance Committee meetings for 2025. This is through the Law Committee and Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Wolfinger.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Yes, thank you. This is the first of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 10624. We have now concluded the readings of resolutions and move now to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Ordinance 3024.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Lancaster, Ohio, the city, to enter into an amendment to the natural gas supply agreement, a tax certificate or tax regulatory agreement, a bond purchasing agreement, and a continuing disclosure agreement or commitment, all as necessary in any and all other agreements that may be deemed necessary or appropriate the agreements. Number two, authorizing the use of certain financial and demographic information of the city and the preliminary official statement and an official statement and continuing disclosure in connection with the issuance of revenue bonds by the Lancaster Port Authority. And number three, authorizing the payment of all necessary professional services related to the agreements, the preliminary official statement, and the official statement, all for the purpose of the purchase and distribution of natural gas by the city and related to the issuance of revenue bonds by the Port Authority to assist the city with its acquisition of a supply of natural gas, including additional volumes for sale of the city.
And to declare an emergency.
Declare an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Scott. This is Clerk Scott's second meeting, folks. I think she's doing pretty well for this evening.
Bear with me.
So. Councilmember Wolfinger.
I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that?
No.
Neither will fight.
But we appreciate it. Never gets old, though.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter on a written record Resolution, Temporary Resolution 30-24.
Ordinance.
Thank you.
Second. We have a motion in a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 3024. At this time, I would just offer this, offer thanks to the Law Director, our Economic Development Department, everybody who's worked very, very hard, Councilmember Wolfinger, everybody who's worked very hard to get this ordinance across the line, so.
Thank you. No need to further discuss. Ms. Bosco gave a great introduction.
Yes, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfing, or, Mr. Wing, sorry.
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance 3024 passes nine to zero. Second reading of ordinances, beginning with Temporary Ordinance 3324.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to acquire five permanent drainage easements necessary for the East Main Street sewer separation and, and court drainage improvements Phase One project. Water Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
This will be the second of three readings, please.
Second of three readings on Temporary Ordinance 3324. First reading of ordinances, there are none, folks. We're done with that. So, we are done with the reading of ordinances and resolutions, which constitutes our voting pattern. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go back into our regular order of business.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
So, we have a motion in a second to go back into the regular order of business. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. So, at this time, folks, big event. We have reached the time for permission of voters and taxpayers. I'm going to give everybody the rules. Please recognize, we are here for public discourse. It is, it's being cooperative, presenting your views to council, not any of the other folks in the audience. I know they're here, they're listening like you are, but you're here to present your views to council. Council is not, this is not a question-and-answer period. It is for us to listen, and we will go about listening to everybody this evening. Please keep in mind, speakers must be a resident or taxpayer of the city of Lancaster. They've provided your name and addresses for the record. We have that so we can make that reflective in the minutes. Time is limited to three minutes. I will keep count. I hope Apple is, I hope Apple is right, but I think it might be. And as I've said, all comments should be directed towards council. At any time, council, as you've seen this evening, can suspend its rules, conclude comment, limit the number of speakers, or move the time for public comment should it deem necessary to conclude regular business. So, we are going to begin with public comment. I hope that you know which order you've signed up in, but I do believe Law Director Hall has the list for folks, and so we will begin public comment now. Just let me pull up our timer. Okay. You may begin, sir.
Good evening. I am Thomas Pierce. I reside on East Fifth here within the city proper. I gladly pay taxes to the city for its services. I have and do serve on a number of community boards to provide a better quality of life for our citizens. I am at least a sixth generation of my family to reside here within the city. Born and raised here, I moved away for college and law school. Newly married, my wife and I chose to move back here to raise our family. Lancaster has been a wonderful community to grow up in and raise my family. After your last council meeting, I learned about a group whose only aim seemed to be to suppress the free speech of others. I don't follow city government closely. I trust you to do the right thing, and if I have concerns, you'll hear from me. Tonight is one of those times. I watched your meeting online and was appalled to see a group of folks railing against a community event called Light the Night. Of that group of nine persons to address you in opposition, at least seven of those are, nine are outsiders. They do not reside in the city nor pay taxes to the city as residents, and should have no say in how my tax dollars are or are not spent to support my city and to provide engagement opportunities for my fellow citizens. I chose to attend Light the Night, and I saw love and respect and joy from participants. What I saw from the outsiders and protesters was intimidation and name-calling. One protester proudly carrying and waving a large Christian flag called a prominent community leader in attendance, a pedophile. This is, that is reprehensible and disgusting and does not represent Jesus as I know him. That community leader is a state and nationally-recognized child welfare expert who has spent the entirety of her career solely in the service of protecting our children. Other protesters appeared to be walking throughout the crowd, wearing Second Amendment T-shirts and carrying what appeared to be concealed weapons. However, before the Second Amendment comes the First Amendment, and what I saw was duly and appropriately expressed by the participants at Light the Night. I'll end with this. There are events at the Bandstand or Fountain Square that I do not agree with. However, I don't complain to the city that they can't or shouldn't gather. They have that constitutional right. Just as it is their right to gather to something I strongly oppose, I have the right not to attend. I don't protest, threaten, or intimidate those groups because it offends me. Therefore, I will not stand idly by while outsiders and others try to tell me what I and my fellow citizens of Lancaster can and cannot participate in. I deplore others who believe they have the right to choose for me. They don't, I choose for myself. That is freedom. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. So, folks, folks, I appreciate that folks want to express their approval or disapproval. We have to keep the meeting going, so if you could refrain from the applause or talking over anybody, I would appreciate it. We just want to, want people to be able to be heard, and that's what we're here for tonight, okay, folks? I appreciate you. Thank you. We'll now move to our next speaker.
Mr. Daniel Egnatoff? That was a guess.
My name is Daniel Egnatoff. I live on South High Street in downtown Lancaster, Ohio. You're going to hear a lot about children tonight and how they're being harmed, and there are children being harmed here, but they're being harmed by the hate. It's taking homes from them. Compared to other kids, LGBTQ kids are four times more likely to be homeless. The leading cause of that homelessness is being kicked out or having to flee their family home they've lived in their whole life because someone there is uncomfortable with them. It's taking their futures. 80% of LGBTQ kids are harassed at school because of their identity. They suffer verbal and physical abuse from students, sometimes from teachers. Because of that, they're more at risk of failing classes, having to repeat grades, and dropping out of school completely than their classmates. It's taking their lives. Rates of attempted suicide among LGBTQ youth are over three times higher than that in other kids. They're significantly more likely to be bullied, harassed, physically and sexually assaulted, and when those things happen to them, they often don't have anyone they feel they can trust to tell. The adults that are supposed to be there for them are uncomfortable talking about it. So, that's the kids we need to be protecting, the most marginalized, vulnerable people in our community, kids who suffer every single day because some people are uncomfortable acknowledging that they exist. And those people selfishly put their personal comfort over the safety of the children they use as cover. use as cover. So, when you ask me if kids are being harmed, yeah, they are. There were kids at Light the Night who had to deal the entire night with an uncomfortable reminder that some people feel uncomfortable about them and would rather hate them than get over it like adults. So, if it's really about the children, if you really care and you want to protect kids, start with the hate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now move to our next speaker.
My name's Natalie, and I live on Mulberry Street. Councilmembers, I'm here today to speak on behalf of a truly remarkable group in our community, the Rainbow Alliance of Fairfield County. This organization has done an outstanding job in making our city feel safe, inclusive, and welcoming to everyone. They've brought to Lancaster things I never imagined that I would see. Through their dedication and support, we now have pride in the most beautiful ways imaginable. The Rainbow Alliance sponsors countless family-friendly activities, bringing together people from all walks of life to support one another. The event on Saturday, September fourteenth, was nothing short of spectacular. It moved me deeply to realize how fortunate I am to witness this part of our town's history. The next generation, my generation, now has the chance to walk through downtown with their families, feeling safe and proud to be themselves, to experience community, individuality, and acceptance. It's a reality I never thought that I'd see in my hometown. I was raised Christian, like many in this community, and today I value love above all else. What I experienced at Light the Night was just that. It was love, acceptance, and pure joy. The Rainbow Alliance has brought a wave of inclusivity and kindness in our city, for which I am profoundly grateful. Unfortunately, even amid all the positivity where there were those who sought to bring negativity, I saw the protesters, though they were silent and peaceful, their shirts displayed messages of hate. Despite this, I remain steadfast in my beliefs. It is my right as a citizen of the United States to follow my own path, to believe in what I choose, and to raise my children in a manner that aligns with those values. I am proud of who I am, and I am thankful to have a partner, family, and friends who support me. I am deeply thankful for the Rainbow Alliance and for the acceptance that they have brought to Lancaster. I take pride in living in a community, a state, and a nation where our beliefs are our own and cannot be stripped away by those trying to diminish the dreams of the next generation. I find it perplexing that so many people were upset by the event on September fourteenth, an event that was entirely open to the entire community, yet no one was obligated to be there. What's confusing is that in the same town, an event happens weekly at numerous locations that don't align with my beliefs or values, and I choose not to expose my children to them. We simply opt out of not attending a church service. Yet, I've never gone into a church service, mocked its attendees, or shared unauthorized videos of their children online. I respect that it is not my place to interfere with what others choose for their families as it doesn't impact my life. Instead of reacting with hostility to things that we don't understand, why not make an effort to educate ourselves?
Ma'am, you've reached your three-minute limit, please. Please conclude.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
President Porter, the next individual doesn't live inside the City of Lancaster, and I know you enacted rules this evening indicating that the speakers must be voters or taxpayers, so I didn't know.
So, if, if that individual does not, we, we will move to the next speaker, please.
Okay. The next speaker is Chuck Burgett. How are you a taxpayer? I'm sorry.
I'm paying taxes in Lancaster.
Income tax?
Okay. Well, if, if the gentleman is, is, has been paying income tax, he can come up and take his turn at the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, just wanted to be safe.
It's okay. And I respect that. My name is Rick Hansberger, and I have lived in and around Lancaster, the City of Lancaster, my entire life. Among other things, I am a social influencer, a community organizer, and an elected official. According to Search Labs, the United States of America closely estimates that seven-point-five percent of the population identify as LGBT. Now, when you narrow that search down to Ohio, it drops to four-point-three percent, and considering that Fairfield County has been even more conservative, you can rest assured the percentage falls way short of that right here in our town. Yet, here we are, discussing the fact that a minute portion of our demographic seeks to get special privileges and special treatment based on an unfounded accusation that they don't feel safe in our community. This is a ruse. I believe you already know this. If the LGBT community wants to have their activities, no one can deny that they have rights in this country. We all have friends and relatives that paid the price for our freedoms with their very lives, and that includes the LGBT community. What's in question here is the people's right to be out in public without the fear of encountering public indecency. We've been reassured by public officials that even as recently as last night, these activities that took place down at the gazebo just nine days ago violated established public decency laws. My choice of sexuality is a private matter. So is yours. I'm not going to announce my sex life to the world for many reasons. One of those reasons is that my sexual preference does not define who I am. So categorically, no one can define who they are based on their sexual preference. A person's identity is based on their faith of choice and on their ability to interact with others around them. And when I say faith of choice, I'm not making a spiritual statement, I'm making a factual statement, because you can have faith in yourself. If the LGBT community wants to enjoy their freedoms, that is the choice they can make as American citizens. When the issue we seek council to weigh in on comes to this, how much display of someone else's sexuality can be permitted in public? Well, the answer is zero. Not just the LGBT community, but everyone in this room. I'm not excluding them, I'm including every single person here. So, your choice here today is not to decide one side or the other.
You've reached your three-minute limit.
Oh, thank you.
So, I ask you to conclude. Once again, folks, we've asked everybody, please, we're trying to get through and get to everybody that we can.
I'm already here.
Oh, thank you.
Sir, you may start.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Burgoon. I live at three forty-six Bovington Road in Lancaster. I was born and raised here. I am the Executive Director of the Fairfield Family Forum, and I am their spokesman. What is before the council is not, we were asking to look at the code and see if, within the code, the things that happened that Saturday lined up with the code and violated it or, or, you know. And so, a question was, what is obscenity? And obscenity, the character or quality of being obscene, conduct tending to corrupt the public morals by its indecency, lewdness, and that was State versus Fennington in U.S. versus Mel, and that's right out of Black's Law Dictionary, Fourth Edition. Material obscenity is to the average person applying contemporary community standards, dominate, dominant theme, a material taken as a whole appeals to the purient interest if it is utterly without redeeming social importance. Description or representation if it is hardcore pornography, that was Roth versus United States. Offenses to chastity of mind or to modesty, expressing or presenting to the mind or viewing something that delicacy, purity, and decency forbids to be exposed. Calculate the corrupt, depraved, and debauched the morals of the people and to promote violation of law, licentiousness, libidiousness, and tending to excite feelings of an impure and unchaste character. Tending to stir the sexual impulses or to lead to sexual impure lustful thoughts, tending to corrupt the morals of youth, or to lower the standards of the right and wrong, especially as to sexual relations, that was Parmi versus United States. And so, I went to the Justice Department website, and they still use Miller versus California as their standard for what's obscene and what's not. And currently, there are thirteen states, including Ohio, that see this as a potential problem within our communities. So, it's not like there's a few of us standing up trying to push back. In my own family, I've lost members to AIDS. I have others in my family that are of the homosexual community, sorry, and we don't shun them. When they come to visit, we accept them. We don't agree with their lifestyle, but we don't shun them, and we don't hate them, no more than we hate the opposing group that's here tonight. We want to love them as Christ loved them. So, I yield back my time.
Thank you, sir. Now, move on to the next speaker.
Mr. Mike Weldon.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thanks. Derek Ut.
Hi, my name is Derek Ut. I don't know a lot of you, but a lot of you probably know who I am. I'm the crazy guy with the van full of signs that drives around town putting signs up all over the place. I'm currently out on forty-five-thousand-dollar bond for putting signs up around town, asking for justice for child rapes taking place at Lancaster football parties where this former CPS director and current principal's son is raping children.
Can I stop you for a second, sir? Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. The lights went out in the back. I just, go ahead, sir.
So, I'm here to talk about that today and let you all aware that my case is going to the Ohio Supreme Court this week. I was sentenced to fifteen days in jail unless I apologize to these coaches, and it's not happening. So, the Supreme Court's going to be asked to take jurisdiction of the case, and I also have a pending appeal against the Burries in the Fifth District and twelve criminal charges that this lady is pursuing against me for my signs of free speech. So, this issue downtown is not the big issue. The issue is the pedophiles going in our offices, in our schools, in our courtrooms, and this town is about to have a revival, and people are here for it today. The stuff that goes on downtown, it can happen anywhere, as long as you don't do it in front of children, these people aren't going to fight over it. You guys are stoking this by allowing it and not enforcing the laws. You're sitting up here laughing and smirking, and you want to see these people fight each other. But it doesn't have to happen, and if you guys would just not do this stuff around kids, we could all address the real issue, and that's the pedophiles in Lancaster, Ohio.
Thank you for the comments, sir. Our next speaker.
Aubrey. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Aubrey, and I live on Pleasantville Road. I'm a parent and concerned citizen. I assume that you have seen a repetitive image this week, and I wanted to show you another one and bring us all back to reality. So, do we ban football? Is cheerleading considered obscene? Are children not at these games? I watched a video that has been circulating of my children without my parental consent from this pride event in a right-wing conservative group, and several horrific comments that have incited violence against us, which has now put them in danger. I hope that this act alone demonstrates that these people are not interested in the welfare of our children or overall safety of anyone in this community. As a photographer, I've spent over a decade documenting and compiling videos from Christians, Catholics, and several other religions' wedding receptions from this area, and I have cinematic proof that this kind of dancing and lyrics happen all the time and around children. The difference is that no hateful, spiteful person showed up to protest and tell them how disgusting they are. All of the things mentioned are one's personal preferences and should be kept in mind for their own lives and their own children. While they might not want to watch a drag performance or take their kids to one, that is great, and absolutely they're right. While I personally don't believe in a lot of religious practices, it is not my place to show up to a church event and film them and talk about how gross they are, because decent people don't do that. And parents have the right to parent their child how they feel is best. Imagine me addressing this board and saying, I don't believe in church, and I don't agree with what these people are doing with their kids. I shouldn't have to see crosses downtown or be subjected to religious-based events held in your town square. I hope that you'd laugh me out of this room, because it is not my place to attempt to ban things for others just because I don't believe in them. To circle back, gymnasts, ballet dancers, cheerleaders, and any other individual who performs wear skimpy, shiny attire and do the splits. It's as if some of these individuals aren't watching TV or aren't aware of social events that are happening around us. This kind of dancing and performing happens at several locations locally, mostly by young children at recitals, and no one bats an eye. No, I think the problem is, is not what's happening or the actual actions that they see, it's who's doing them. If this was not an event for pride, this would not be an issue, and it is our responsibility as adults to teach the children in our community that it's okay to be yourself. Representation matters, and it saves lives. Rainbow Alliance has been a pillar for our community and is representing countless of your citizens who have not had representation in the past because of suppression and ignorance. I read a quote last night from Fairfield Family Forum that said, "Together, we can convert the lost souls to Christ and really make an impact in Fairfield County." Enough is enough. This is our lives. Queers aren't going anywhere. Neither are their parents, their families, or their friends. We are here, we will stay, and we will not be intimidated. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Vincent Cirillo.
Anything I wanted to say, or anything I say?
Thank you, sir.
Kathleen Porter.
Hello. I am here today really just to say thank you to everyone here who is coming here every month, whether the crowd is this large or much smaller, who is allowing everyone to have their moment in time, their events that they see fit, and you come here and you do your due diligence, and we show up and we have something to say, and I think that we all need to think about the fact that things that are happening in our community happen all the time, and everybody has a right to do and say what they want, as many people before me has expressed. But I would also just really wanted to take the time today to say thank you to all of you, because you worked all day, and then you came here, and you're listening to all of us and everything that we have to say, and I want to make sure that you know that I value that, and I'm thankful that you give all of us the opportunity to have our voices heard, and that's about it. I'm not as eloquent as everybody else, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Eli Schleich, and I live on the Rico Boulevard. I once again want to address the council. Hello, everyone. Good to see you again. Thank you again for your time. Like my previous speaker stated, we appreciate you being here. As I said last time, I am a resident of Lancaster. I live here, I work here, and I prosper here. Me and my brother are both members of marginalized communities in the United States of America, and we both do a lot around here. You could ask Amanda Everett, she has us wrapped around her finger. But we do so much to keep this community running, and we do so much to keep this community proud. And I just want to say that fear has no place in this community. We may not be a community that agrees on everything, but I will say that we are one who allows space for everyone, and that was challenged on the fourteenth. I'm trying. I'm really tired of having to have this argument over and over again. I do it at school, I do it at work, I do it here now before you. Hate hurts, and it's not about what we do or how we do it, there's simply just going to be hate, and that's something we can't change, unfortunately. So, I'm not going to fight on your beliefs, your religion, on anything else, but I am going to say, if you do not like what we have to do, you do not have to be there. The event was public, but not mandatory. The event was love, and we express that in many different ways, in our performances, in day-to-day, and shopping with local vendors with some really cute items. But that's what we're going to do, and we're going to keep doing that. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Amy Schleich.
Hello, members of Sviddy Council. Most of my stuff has already been said, and it's been said very well by other individuals, so mine's going to be short and sweet. If we're worried about children seeing images downtown at Light the Night that we don't want them to see, these same individuals took those same pictures and and have put it all over social media and all over areas around town, even being on individuals' doors, probably not mine because I have a Pride flag out front. But if we're worried about children seeing it, guess what? Children are going to see it on the social media or when they get home off the school bus and it's on their door. And you've just done the very same thing that you didn't want us to do. So I'm not sure why we're here talking. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Natalie Noyes.
Thank you, members of council, for hearing us out today. My name's Natalie Noyes. I reside on South Tenant Street here in Lancaster. I grew up here. I went to high school here. In fact, I used to, as part of Lancaster High School, film these very council meetings and remember not imagining myself in this chamber. I stand before you today not just as a citizen and a taxpayer, but also as the president of the Rainbow Alliance of Fairfield County. I was proud to take this over in April of this year, and my first six months has been tumultuous, to say the best. But I remain so proud of this organization. I cannot speak to the numbers that one of the prior speakers had mentioned for LGBTQ+ youth. I was a youth who did not come out until my years in college because of social stigma. So I am very proud to say that now this is an identity I may hold, and I may hold publicly, and I can also provide education and entertainment for other members of my community. The mission of the Rainbow Alliance is to foster community, provide education, and host events open to all members of the LGBTQIA+ community, all as their allies. Folks who donate to us are donating to allow us to keep these events open to the public, free of cost. With the cost of virtually everything going up, it was important to us that we have a free event that families could attend. And it was a fantastic event. I'm very proud of our speakers from the Fairfield County Heritage Association, of our Lancaster Pride Choir, which was phenomenal, the Columbus Pride Band members who joined us, and yes, also of the drag performers who were there. This was a lovely night in downtown Lancaster with several other local businesses also having events for folks to attend. And I loved knowing that people could attend a plethora of these events. September is also National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Thank you to the Chase Haley Association, who is always bringing this to light. But when we talk about suicide prevention, LGBTQ+ youth are four times as likely, these are CDC records as of 2022, to contemplate suicide. So when we provide these safe spaces, it is harm prevention. It is allowing these youth, like me, who may be questioned, to have a space that no matter what or how they identify, they will have safety, they will have community. And we are so grateful to have that community in our hometown of Lancaster, Ohio.
Ma'am, you've reached your three limit.
Thank you.
Three-minute limit. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Levi Bartos.
Hello, my name is Levi Bartos. I reside at 706 South Columbus Street here in Lancaster, Ohio. I have been a Lancaster member, sorry, not member, resident since 2019. I want to talk to you, as you guys see, I'm in a wheelchair. I want to see if we're able to make the roads safer, sidewalks safer, especially on the south side. I have almost been hit in crosswalks for various reasons, some people not paying attention or in a hurry, or just not educated about pedestrian laws, or who has the right of way or who did not have the right of way. Secondly, is the sidewalks. I've flipped out of my manual chair, the one I'm in right now, multiple times on uneven sidewalks or even crossing streets. I have actually almost flipped out of my power chair, which has got bigger tires as well, due to having uneven sidewalks and stuff. South Columbus Street, past the Canal Street, has no sidewalks at all. I've almost been hit four different times now since the two years I utilized this wheelchair. Another thing is, I'm a sports enthusiast, so the skate park that I hear we are looking to get, I'm wanting to know if I'm able to be a part of that, like building it, since I utilize the one that we have now. So Newark, Ohio, has a really good skate park. It's accessible for wheelchair users, and myself go there a lot. Hopefully, I did not go over my three minutes, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. And again, thank you, guys, for coming out after your workdays.
Thank you, sir. You did not go over your three minutes. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Alicia Curry, but she does not reside in the city limits. Does she pay income tax, work at a building in the city limits, et cetera?
Good evening. No, I was born and raised in Lancaster, but I don't reside here now. So out of respect for the rules of the council, I'll cede my time.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Robert Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that a lot of things have already been said, so I'll keep it short. You know, I don't hate anybody. I don't think that the God that I serve hates anybody. I have nothing but love for everyone, especially the unborn, for kids. You know, and I'm speaking as a resident of Lancaster, a father myself. I really want, I really want kids to just be protected in this town. And I think that what happened on September 14th, now I was there at Light the Night. I think the vast majority of the night, I think most of us would agree, went off. It was fine. There were people talking, there were vendors, speakers, like that's, you know, First Amendment all the way, that's totally fine. But there were just a couple performers, I think, that performed later on, that had minimal clothing, that were doing special routines that were exposing themselves in a way that I think could be sexual in nature. There were children handing these men money, sometimes putting it in garments, handing it to them, things like that. And, you know, I firmly believe that this kind of activity, while I may not agree with it, if it were to happen on private property, there's nothing I can do about that, and I think that most of us would agree. I think the main issue that a lot of us have is that this happened on a public park in the middle of town in the middle of the day. And, you know, something that children should not have seen, should not have been exposed to. I think there are public indecency laws already in the books that should have been enforced that were not. And I think that's a shame. And I hope that this council will look at this in the future and address these problems and make sure that those types of performances don't happen again. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Teresa Speckman.
Hello, I'm Teresa Speckman, a lifelong resident of Lancaster, parent, small business owner, and elder. I'm here today in solidarity with the Rainbow Alliance of Fairfield County, who sponsored Light the Night with Pride Event on September 14th, and the 31 safe spaces that are vetted by the Rainbow Alliance of Fairfield County. My business, Mug Gallery, is included. I want to address the video footage taken by a member of the Fairfield County Conservatives Facebook group, in which they seem to focus on a split second shot that showed the performer with split legs up in the air. When focusing on one scene, one does not get the complete picture of the show. First of all, as an artist and gallery owner, I can say that the drag show is performance art, including dancing during the splits, breakdancing, which was awesome, and general parading around as one would see in a beauty pageant and many other events, whether a musical concert, gymnastics, and the NFL cheerleading. Wow, why somebody else showed the picture. This is an example of one shot of the Minnesota Vikings cheerleading performance in 2016, which was, I eliminated the background because I'm cheap on ink. And that was in 2016, which shows it's been accepted that a woman can perform like this for a long time, a woman. I know, as one of my daughters performed with the Lancaster High School Cheerleading Competition in Florida a few years back. I'm deeply concerned for the potential violence that could result from the hateful, racist, and anti-gay comments that are being spewed by some members of the Fairfield County Conservatives and Fairfield Family Forum Facebook groups that are most likely present here this evening. Some comments state, "God hates fags." And we're focused on businesses that are safe spaces and creating stories that these businesses are grooming children to be gay, as if that was possible. And are pedophiles. I'm aware that this slanders perhaps not the scope of what our city council engages in dealing with, but it's certainly something that I think should be made aware of. I also know, as human beings, we all have needs. We all share the same needs, like safety, community, being heard, being loved. But we all have different strategies to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Law Director Hall, how many do we have left for public comment purposes?
12.
12. So ladies and gentlemen, I know you've heard a lot tonight. We're at 20 till 8. We're not trying to limit comment, but if you've said something or if your plan was to get up and say something that's already been said, believe me, we've heard it, we're listening, we value your correspondence. But we just want to make sure and be respectful of folks' time. So we'll continue with comment now, keeping that in mind. Law Director Hall, who's our next speaker?
It is Sarah Mullins.
Hi, my name is Sarah Mullins, and I'm a lifelong resident of Lancaster. I have also worked and volunteered in our amazing downtown area. I'm also a straight woman of Christian faith, just in case that matters. I want to start by saying that the Pride Event was wonderful. It brought together a community that put love above all else. And you could just feel the happiness in the air. That wasn't until the protesters showed up, using fear tactics to make attendees uncomfortable. I wish I could say their presence didn't affect me, but unfortunately, it did. They carried bags that purposely looked like they contained guns, which was confirmed when I overheard two of them talking as I was leaving, commenting about how great of an idea it was to do that. Their fear tactics worked on me and others. Some of us were on edge for the rest of the evening, constantly watching what they were doing. Eventually, I had to leave due to the anxiety caused by their presence and the fear of how far their hatred might drive them. Especially after one of them commented, "Next drag show, we need to do the same thing as we did during the BLM protest, Second Amendment encouragement." I don't feel I need to explain that threat any further. Although you will hear about children's safety tonight, there was the same protesters at the 18-plus ticketed event at the Faux Bar the night before that also hosted a drag show. Using the safety of children is simply a ruse to get their attention to the public of their actual agenda. The Pride Event was a public gathering for anyone who wanted to attend, a place where people could enjoy being themselves. There was no nudity, no thongs. No one was forced to attend, and those who hated the idea of the event simply could have stayed home. Please don't consider shutting down a safe, harm-free event that means so much to so many people in this town. It is clear that the drag show was not the threat in downtown Lancaster that night. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jenna Hawley.
Everything that I've wanted to say tonight has already been said, so I yield my time, please.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Brian Lambert.
Thank you. I was born and raised here in Lancaster. I actually moved away in 1992 and spent the next 30 years living in another town in Ohio that's made the news lately. But I retired and moved back. When I first lived here, Lancaster was very intimidating. Just the word "gay" could get you beat up.
Sir, excuse me. Could you put the sign down? You're obstructing the view of people behind you. We can see it, we appreciate it. If you want to set it over here in the corner, you can. Thank you. Sir, you may continue.
Okay. Just the word "gay" could get you beat up back when I left. It was refreshing when I moved back a couple of years ago to see that Lancaster had moved forward, was a little more progressive and a little more tolerant. I say "a little more" because whether you're aware of it or not, images from this meeting and the gallery have already made it onto Facebook, I'm assuming in the hopes of intimidating people, to which I say, if you're going to use my picture, get my good side. What happened at the Pride Event was a nice gathering. I've seen worse at Miley Cyrus concerts, Madonna concerts, or even, like they said, in football games. Please do not allow fear, mistrust, and hate to end an event that is trying to bring a community together.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Larry Reams.
Members of council, today I found this in my door, as many of you may have found that, and was a little concerned, so I wanted to come here and see who was trying to stir up fear in my community. A lot of stuff has already been said, but I'm going to focus now just on principle, because that's not been covered. First Amendment means that you can offend me. First Amendment means that I don't have to go there. If I'm being offended by what you're doing, I can walk away. It's okay. If you are a patriot, if you value American principles, truly do so, then you will celebrate the fact that other people are different from you are, respect that, and applaud that. The second principle is for those who consider themselves to be acting out of their Christian faith or any other faith that they have, because they're all looking toward the Creator. If you are of Christian variety, you may recall that Jesus himself only gave us two commandments: love God, hey, easy peasy. The hard one, though, is the second commandment, to love each other. And to love each other basically means accept who others are or how they choose to be, or whatever. It's their life. Let them celebrate it, let them have joy as they find joy. And don't let them come down on me as to how I find joy. That is the golden rule. So if you are truly an American and value our principles, truly a Christian and value each other, we're not going to have this. Or I should say, we're not going to have the fear generated by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Greg Lehman.
Hi, my name is Greg Lehman. I reside at 1484 Tiki Lane. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here. Most things have been said, but I want to say, this was a really great event. We put together a Pride Choir, we practiced hard, and we sounded very good. The Pride Band from Columbus came down, they were excellent. We've been trying for a while now to get them down, and they finally came down, and they were great. The vendors were all necessary, they were wonderful. Information that we all could use, and some people that were selling some things. This wasn't, you know, a bad event. As far as the drag part goes, I didn't go over there. I haven't watched the videos. I guess some people, you know, recorded videos of it, I guess for themselves or showed to their friends, I don't know. But... But there's a lot of anti-church, anti-Christian voices out there, but I'm very, very proud of my church. And years ago, we decided to become an open and affirming church, and this is our statement: No matter who you are or where you are on life's journey, Grace UCC being committed in word and deed to all God's people and listening to our still-speaking God declare ourselves to be open and affirming. We are a congregation on a journey that includes all persons, embracing differences of age, age, gender, gender identity, and/or expression, sexual orientation, race, nationality, ethnicity, physical, mental, emotional ability, family makeup, marital status, socioeconomic, political, and theological background. We welcome and affirm full participation, membership, and leadership in our faith family. All are welcome here. And we had a table downtown, you know, that night, and it was wonderful talking to people and listening to stories and stuff. But just to let you know, there are churches that do consider that being gay is compatible with being a Christian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cynthia Anderson.
I have no agenda, I just want to speak. I'm also a sixth generation, Lancaster Fairfield County, and I have a 24-year-old grandson that is kind of frightened. I believe he's gay, but he's afraid to come out. But I do want to speak of the hate that is being spewed. Someone told me about the Facebook page of Fairfield County Conservatives. This is a hate page, and one of the members that spoke earlier did not speak his true what he says on that page. I don't go to church regularly, but they are spewing this hate in the form of Christianity and trying to force their beliefs on everybody else, and that just isn't going to happen with me or a lot of people in my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rod Williams.
Thank you for calling me up. I want to respect the rules here, I don't live in the city limits. I would like to just take this opportunity to say--
Sir, could you pull your microphone closer?
Yeah, Rod Williams, I live a couple miles north of the city limits--
Do you pay taxes to the city of Lancaster?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so--
I am a, I want to, I want to just, I want to say unrelated to this topic, because Lancaster is the county seat, and I don't really, I'd ask you to maybe revisit your rule about that, because it's--
Thank you, we'll note that comment--
Would you please?
But those are our, those are our rules--
And I respect that.
I think you'll find that they're very similar in other municipalities where people live for purposes of meetings, but thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Amber Stanley.
Once again, folks, we're reaching the end of the meeting, and we do have some business left, so if you don't have a lot new to say, and I'm not trying to dissuade folks, but, you know, just keep that in mind, we appreciate you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am deeply saddened to be here this evening. However, as a mother, I will never miss an opportunity to advocate for my children, their individual identities, and their safety. The Rainbow Alliance of Fairfield County has spent the past few years uplifting our community and creating safe spaces for queer identifying adults and children in the area. Lancaster appeared to be growing, and for the first time, I was genuinely proud to be part of this community. When she was four, I was blessed with my oldest daughter. We spent years unpacking her trauma, and while I knew she was queer way before she did, I was so proud when she finally came out. The first Lancaster Pride Again event was her first out Pride. The mother in me beamed. I was so proud as I watched her fully embrace who she was openly and proudly after all she'd been through. I was robbed of the joy of this core memory, though, constantly looking over my shoulder, torn between watching my children enjoy themselves and ensuring their safety should a truck come barreling through because the queers were in town square. My son is not out by any means. Unlike my daughter, he recognizes the fears and social repercussions of the internalized homophobia deeply rooted within our culture. With his support, he has allowed me to out him here this evening. We lost his great-grandmother earlier this year, they were best friends. I couldn't tell you how many games of Yahtzee they played over the years, or how many sleepovers they had to watch chopped, but I can tell you that she died never knowing who her grandson truly was. I assured him that she would love him just the same, but I could see it in his eyes, he didn't want to disappoint his grandmother. We all have that family member, the one who complains about gay representation on TV or within movies, maybe the ones that make the homo jokes, maybe they don't say anything, they're just the ones that sit by and idly laugh. Sometimes I can't believe I was well into my 30s before I realized I was queer, but then I look around and I'm no longer surprised. They're not completely wrong, though, these neighbors of mine, amongst the fear mongering and the vast array of logical fallacies, there's a wonderful underlying message to be heard here. Protect the children, yes. Protect the one-third of queer youth who will be physically assaulted by their parents simply for their identity. Protect the 41% of queer youth who have considered suicide simply in the past year due to their harassment. Protect the queer kids in our community who go to sleep every night hoping they made it through one more day and no one caught on that they were gay. As a community, we need not entertain this baseless, hate-filled claims tailored to fit such a harmful discriminatory narrative. To do so further perpetuates decades of violence toward one of our most oppressed communities. We are your neighbors, we are your coworkers, we are your friends and your families, we are the businesses you boycott while claiming to support local, we are the churchgoers you ostracize with your bigotry, we are the police officers, the firefighters, and the veterans that you claim to support, we are your mail carriers, your teachers, your cashiers, and your baristas. We're here, and we're queer, and we're not going back.
Folks, thank you, once again. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Reverend Keith McDevitt, but it looks like he does not reside in the city limits, so--
Sir, I have to ask you, do you reside within the city limits?
Yes, 1260 Wheeling Road, northeast--
Okay, thank you.
That's a church.
1260 Wheeling is the parsonage--
Oh.
--where I reside.
Okay, sorry. Just be clear.
No, no, you got to do it, you got to do it. So a lot of us are familiar with the mental health crisis going along with a lot of our youth, and we may be able to name our children, nieces and nephew that I think about who struggle with anxiety and depression. It's really horrible right now, what's going on, social media. But I also want to lift up these statistics that affect the LGBTQIA+ community more. Says that LGBTQIA young people reported living in a very accepting community attempted suicide at less than half the rate of those who reported living in a very unaccepting community. And this is from the Trevor Project. As was stated earlier, the rate of suicide is much higher among those who identify as LGBTQIA. And some have come up here with courage to say that they don't feel safe in the community from what's being posted, and the Rainbow Alliance has created that safe space for them. I realize that everyone's a Christian here, that we all have different faith traditions, but if I could speak for mine for just a second, that I believe in Jesus where God is in solidarity with those who are crucified. God is in solidarity with the orphan, the poor, and the widow, that God longs for life. And I say that just because when I was at the Rainbow Alliance, I saw that in community. I saw that in youth who felt affirmed for the very first time, picking out their flag that represented their identity, and it was beautiful. And so I'm very proud to be in this city, I'm proud of my church, and I'm proud of all those who stand up for what I believe is the kingdom of God. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Ethan Doerr.
Many aging Democrats like to say that the radical politics, policies they're enacting are for the next generation, but I am the next generation, and a growing number of young Americans like myself reject your, this agenda completely. We reject a degenerate, sex-driven society. We live in and build a civilization, and we want to build a civilization that will make our descendants proud, not some depraved, craven cesspool of filth that you guys have built. We reject a perverted, childless ideology that relies on the grooming of other people's children in order to sustain itself. A barren ideology is a dead ideology. These ideologies only work if perverts are allowed to access our children's minds and bodies. We will have none of it. We reject a selfish, consumer-driven, sorry, wrong line, wrong line. We reject the boomer-driven degeneracy and bankruptcy that this city council, this state, and country have built for their legacy. You may keep it. In the future, we will be the city council, and we will tear down every last shred of this filthy legacy so that no one ever remembers that you were ever on this city council. Enjoy your delusions while you have them, and a day is coming, and not too long in the future, that they will be seen as the frantic scrambling and screeching of sadly lost souls. Repent while the time is now. I, and my time.
Thank you, sir. Nobody's answering. Nobody's answering. Uh, next speaker, please.
Mark Conrad.
My name is Mark Conrad, I live on Town Beach Avenue. I worked at Fairfield County for 21 years before I retired. Born in Lancaster, my dad worked at Anchor Hocking for over 40 years, so we've been part of this community for a very long time. I am also the senior warden of St. John's Episcopal Church downtown Lancaster, right next to the gazebo. I'm also a licensed lay worship leader, licensed lay preacher, and I specifically do the morning prayer service, 9:00 AM Tuesdays through Fridays, at the church. I personally, and St. John's is a church, including the clergy, and St. John's has been part of Lancaster for nearly 200 years, are highly supportive of the Rainbow Alliance of Fairfield County, and specifically of the Light the Night with Pride event and other events they put on. We hosted an ecumenical prayer service of affirmation along with Grace United Church of Christ. We hosted the Pride course for their practice and warm-up session before they performed, and we provided dressing room space for the performers of the drag show that evening. Those performers were the nicest, friendliest people you could ever hope to meet. We had a young lady from our church who was present when they were at our church. She's going through a lot of family struggles of various types, and it was a very healing moment for her just to interact with those performers. And lastly, I just want to, we are, we are considered a safe space by the Rainbow Alliance. So we're fully supportive of them, and the final thing I want to say, as a person, the gentleman in the wheelchair, I fully support his agenda as well. Thank you.
Frank Clark.
My name's Frank Clark, I live on Forest Rose Avenue.
Sir, sir--
This should never happen in our town.
Sir, I ask, sir, I ask you to use your time to address council, please.
Okay, I just want to make sure that--
You can set it down and folks can see it.
--people don't know about this event.
Understood.
And to dispel all the lies that was told--
Speak into the mic, too.
The only people who were bullied at their event was us. They were yelling at us while we were praying, four of us in a circle holding hands on Main Street, they were mocking us. One girl jumped out from behind a corner in the dark, I think she owns the mermaid goddess, I'm not sure, but she jumped out, got my face, and screamed. Let's see, so the party that, love is love, it's only if you agree with them is love is love. If you don't agree with them, then it's not love anymore. They will mock you, they will berate you, they will try to bully you. Obviously, I'm a big guy, it doesn't bother me, I've, everybody in town knows me, I've been around town, I'm not worried about it, but, so just take that into consideration. They're saying they fear, never seen it, safe space, what's a safe space? Because they got a rainbow flag on their business? I mean, are we, I have nothing against gays and lesbians and that agenda, don't do it in front of kids, don't do it in front of kids. That, right there, was filth. That's not about being gays and lesbian, that is filth. And there was little kids putting money in the pants of these transgenders. That's disgusting. So I've got six kids here, they're going to be raised the right way, shame on the churches that are promoting this.
I'm going to ask everyone, we've been good this evening, we've let everybody speak, please do not interrupt from the audience, and please do not address the audience--
Can I get my 10 seconds?
Yes, you've still got your time, thank you.
The shame on the churches for promoting it, because the Bible says, "Love the sinner, not the sin." It doesn't say promote the sin in front of my church, or condone the event, put rainbow flags all over my church, and let drag queens dress in my church. It says, "Love the sinner, not the sin." So there was no fear provoking, there was no firearms and bags, there was none of that stuff that was said, it's just a thing where they are trying to get you guys to think that they were in fear so they can promote their agenda and continue their agenda. I hope you guys will see through this and realize that 90, 95% of this town does not agree with this. They don't agree with this perverted agenda, they don't agree with it in front of kids. I've talked to them, I've been out, I see a lot of people, so thank you for my--
Thank you, sir. Law Director Hall.
Nobody left, except for me.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the end of public comment. Thank you for participating this evening in an orderly way. Public comment is a time to address city council, and we thank you for you doing that this evening. At this time, I would ask Law Director Hall for her comments related to the vast majority of the public comments that we've had this evening. Thank you, Law Director.
And thank you, President Porter. I'm going to take this opportunity to use the big podium, because they never let me do that. They always made me sit there behind the podium so that nobody can see me, which is not a bad thing necessarily, I tend to make a lot of faces when things are happening. But good evening, everybody, as you all heard earlier, I am your elected law director and city prosecutor, for those of you who are citizens in Lancaster. And council asked me to address you because many of you have been asking them to enforce a variety of laws. If you go back to Civics 101, council is our legislative branch, and they do not enforce the laws. That is the responsibility of the executive branch, and that's where my office comes Council has a lot of important work to do yet, so I'm going to keep my comments brief. You've all been very patient, and I appreciate that, and I know we're all here for the same reason, the Cedar Hill Neighborhood Plan, but I'm going to talk about one thing in depth tonight, and that is the Light the Night with Pride event. So as we've all heard, it was downtown in a public venue. It was in Zane Park, which is surrounded by public right-of-way and public streets, and that park and that right-of-way are available to all on a first-come, first-serve basis, and they always have been. Equal protection of the law guarantees everyone under the 14th Amendment that they will be treated equally. The 14th Amendment was enacted specifically to alleviate issues related to discrimination. And as Justice Neil Gorsuch held in the Supreme Court's 2020 Bostock ruling, "It's impossible to discriminate against a person for being homosexual or transgender without discriminating against the individual based on sex." Therefore, the city cannot treat LGBTQ plus individuals any differently than they treat any other group that wants to use that space. What we can do is place reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on the speech and expression that occur in such places. We have enacted laws, they're on the books, they mirror the state law, and they all comply with federal First Amendment jurisprudence on this issue. There is a broad spectrum of legally permissible behavior, and I'm going to say that again, there is a very broad spectrum of legally permissible behavior that is protected by the First Amendment, and that includes drag shows generally. Saturday's show was a bit risque, I never need to see anybody's butt in public, never, ever, regardless of who they are or what they look like. I think it's completely inappropriate, personally, but professionally, I know that there is a difference between inappropriate and illegal. They are two different things. It's illegal to engage in public indecency or participate in an obscene performance in public, though. Such behavior is not protected by the First-- Such behavior is not protected by the First Amendment. And I'm just going to say, if there are any parents at home with kids watching, now might be the time to move them away from the television if you don't want them to learn some words that are probably inappropriate. I wasn't present for the Light the Night with Pride event. Lancaster did have two police officers in attendance, they did not make any arrests that night because they did not see any behavior that rose to the level of public indecency or obscenity. The detective who compiled the pictures and video from that event, from all of those folks who provided that to the police department, thank you very much, he brought it to my office. After reviewing it all, he agreed, he did not see any instances of behavior that would require the police to intervene or issue any kind of citation. Finally, myself and two of my assistant prosecutors reviewed it as well. And so you know, we are all over the political spectrum in my office. One of them is further to the right than I am, one of them is further to the left than I am. We all three watched the same video and looked at the same pictures and all came to the conclusion that nothing that happened was a chargeable criminal offense. We did not see anything that amounted to visible genitalia and that includes actual cleft of butt crack, scrotum, anus, vagina, labia, the works, it includes everything. None of that was present, didn't see any of it. It was all covered by the performer's actual costume. There was no sexual conduct or sexual contact. Sexual conduct is actually engaging in sexual intercourse of some variety. We all know there are a lot of varieties, I'm not going to go into all of those tonight, but there are. It's not that. Sexual contact is purposeful touching of another person's erogenous zones to specifically arouse them or give them sexual gratification. None of that occurred either. There was nothing in those videos or pictures that showed that. There is a picture floating around that shows a performer on the ground whose legs are spread. It is tasteless, but it lacks context. The video from that night shows that the performer questioned was in that position for a split second while performing a dance routine. Dance, like speech, is an expression that is protected by the First Amendment. Courts have held that repeatedly. I have no control over that. I've had several concerned citizens cite case law to me over the past weeks. I appreciate that effort. However, some of the case law was from the 40s and 50s. It's obviously not good law anymore. I know what the law is and the law is essentially the Miller test. I'm happy to repeat the Miller test for all of you here tonight, but I don't think anybody wants to go in that, go into that and I honestly don't want to get fined by the FCC for the even more vulgar words that would have to come out of my mouth to demonstrate what that is and how this fails to meet that test. Specifically with regard to one of the cases, I believe it was Roth or Parmalee, it says, and they did it more succinctly and that's why I'm going back to this, they said hardcore pornography is what qualifies. If any of you have seen the pictures or video, this is not hardcore pornography. I have been a prosecutor for the last 18 years in Fairfield County and I know hardcore pornography when I see it. This is not it. So, in conclusion, I cannot represent or give legal advice to any individual person here. It is my job to represent the city and the city's elected officials and all of the city's departments and I, I take that job very seriously. I enjoy my job. It's difficult at times, I'm not going to lie, especially times like this, but I have answered every single email that has been sent to me with questions about the law, with questions about what is legal, what is not legal, and I'm happy to do that. I will do that for as long as it takes to answer everybody's questions and make sure that they all understand why we're doing what we're doing. I want to leave you with one last bit of info, something to think about. And you have to ask yourself, if, if we're willing to disregard anybody's rights, anybody's personal freedoms, then what's to keep us from trampling everyone's? There's nothing. I took an oath to uphold the law. We all did. We all swore on a Bible before we were put into elected office that we would uphold the laws of the city, of the state and of the country. And that is what I am doing. Nothing more, nothing less. That's my job. That's my decision, that's my reasoning and like I said before, I'm happy to speak to anybody who has a question about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Law Director Hall. Thank you, everybody. We are going to, at this time, continue with the regular meeting. Thank you for coming and presenting your comments and we're going to continue with the meeting at this time with reports of standing committees.
Committees, Finance Committee minutes dated September 10, 2024, submitted by Mr. Wolfinger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reports of special committees.
I'm sorry, there are no reports of special committees presented to council this evening.
We have no public hearing. We will now move to tabled legislation. There is none. Unfinished business? Any council member with unfinished business? Yes.
I do have a question. So with this having, you know, what you've said, is there anything that we can do to make sure it is inside, though, I mean, I'm not trying to prevent them from doing it, but is there anything that the next time could be inside, like the drag, is there anything that, I'm just asking, just to-
No, that's fine. As I explained, you know, the city parks and public property are open to everyone on an equal basis and so as long as nobody is, is, you know, engaging in a criminal activity, we cannot keep them from holding their, their event on city property. Like I said, it's first come, first served, so whoever gets there first and gets signed up, that's who has access to the park for that particular period. But no, we can't treat individual groups differently.
I didn't know because of what, the act, I mean, not act, just the dancing that went on the way, you know, it was like it was, if it had to be inside. Because the drag, the drag show the night before was, that's what I'm wondering.
Okay, those are two different issues. The drag show that was the night before happened indoors.
Right.
And that's a private event at a private business that was ticketed, that's, yeah, that's-
Okay.
-separate and distinct, yeah, from this. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Councilmember Teener. Any other unfinished business at this time? Hearing none, we're going to move to new business. At this time, I will entertain a motion to appoint Councilmember Wolfinger to the Sid Board, given the departure of Councilmember Nyhizer.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I moved, I moved to make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? And we have a second. At this time, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjack?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop?
Yes.
Mr. Locktonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolfinger. We appreciate your service on the Sid Board. Thank you. We'll now move to the announcements of scheduled meetings.
I have October 14th, for regular council meetings at 6:30 and October 28th at 6:30 PM.
Special meetings.
Special council meeting, September 14th was, needs to be rescheduled and rescheduling needs to be determined.
Thank you. We've got a regularly scheduled committee meetings.
Water, Water Pollution Committee, September 27th at 7:30 AM, City Hall, 1897 Conference Room. Safety Committee, October 4th at 8:00 AM, City Hall, 1897 Conference Room. Public Works Committee, October 18th at 7:30 AM, City Hall, 1897 Conference Room. And Finance Committee, October 14th at 6:00 PM, Council Chambers.
Reading of bills.
MCO, $128.50 and then MNCO, again, for $114.52.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
A motion, a second, to pay the bills. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. There's no need for an executive session. At this time, I would take a motion to adjourn the regularly scheduled council meeting for October, excuse me, September 23rd.
Mr. President, I'd like that, to make that motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to our audience this evening. We appreciate your cooperation and allowing people to speak in an orderly fashion. Thank you.